I'd like to call to order the meeting for the Brian City Board of Education to Monday, March 8th. Would you join me in pledge allegiance? Pledge allegiance.
To the light of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Scott here.
Ben here.
Deb.
Here.
Justin.
Here.
Mike.
Here.
Thank you.
All right, I trust that everyone's had an opportunity to look at the meetings from our, not the meetings, our minutes from our February meeting. And just asking if there's any discussion, corrections, additions. So hearing done, I would accept the motion to approve those minutes. So who, thank you, Mike.
Second.
Thank you, Ben. Scott.
Yes.
Ben.
Yes.
Deb.
Yes.
Justin.
Yes.
Mike.
Yes.
Thank you. Public participation. Not very many. So we will move on, communication. We have the four county report from Cindy.
Yep. So I do have the report from Cindy Keeler in regards to the happenings at four county Career Center. She opens up to us when you join the sunshine, which I hope all of you are, or gave at some point today before it's set. So here is the monthly report. Four county Career Center is wrapping up the quarter, which ends on March 12th, and their spring break will begin March 29th and run through April 2nd. Four county Career Center is excited that they have received 570 applications from current sophomores in the four county area, and these sophomores did not step foot in the building as all tours have been virtual at this point, so they're excited for those high numbers. At this point, 450 of those students have been able to be placed so far. Some notable Bryan students doing some great things during the month of February. We had William Decatur. He became a BPA officer with Public Relations, and he is the Computer Networking and Cyber Security Program. We also had commercials that were played on WBNO, and they were voiced by Bryan students Dayton Jack and Jacob Washington. We also had an acceptance of a donation from Allied Bowl of Products in Bryan, and those were on behalf of student Mason Berry. He is in the electrical program, and also those were on behalf of Abe Fenter in the electrical program. So congratulations to both of them. And then we also had our students qualifying for the state competition with the Business Professionals of America, the BPA. We have Jayden Yates, Nicholas Rank, Zane Lauren, Samantha Lopez, Erica Wisnewicz, Isaac Yunus, and William Decatur. Best of luck to them in the state competition that is coming up. And then also coming up at the state level is the Skills USA Competition. So the students that qualified from Bryan for the Skills USA Competition are Skina Injured, Austin Tomaszewski, and William Douglas. We also have three others that will be attending with them, that's Travis Rosenthal, Tyler Davis, and Alex Brown. We had some exciting news in the world of athletics. We had Ryan Muller-Fate Harding, who's in the Early Childhood Education Program, placed first team All League and named Muller of the Year. So I'm sure Coach Savage might make note of that honorable recognition as well. And then we conclude with our students are doing amazing things, and we look forward to the break. Okay, we look forward to seeing you all next month.
Great. Thanks, Mark.
Thank you.
And thank you Cindy Keeler for being our representative of four county. Okay, so moving on to communications, we will do our normal monthly spotlight, and today it's student internship program highlights. And we'd like to have Mrs. Arthur to come up.
Yep, I can do that.
Come on up, Mrs. Arthur. So we have with us, and she'll introduce them all, we have an outstanding internship program happening with our students. I do have your white guy, so she will tell you all about it. She's our guest with us.
Awesome. Thank you so much. As the students and their mentors or their site supervisors make their way up here, I wanted to just give you a real quick history of the evolution of the program. Back in the early 90s, I, my understanding is there was a huge committee comprised of teachers and business, people in the community, and they researched and they came up with what was formerly our trust program. So some of you might remember that, some of you might have had students who participated in that. Those students spent two days out in our community, doing community service, learning about philanthropic organizations, activities, just getting involved and living a hand. They spent the other two days in the classroom earning their senior English credit and a social studies credit. When that program began to be phased out, we had a few years where we literally had just probably five or 10 students a year who were looking for something to sort of help them make up their mind about their futures. We're looking for some mentoring opportunities and internship type activities, and we did that for a few years. That sort of fell into our counselor's offices lap, and that was a big job. So we transitioned to what is now known as the Workforce Development Program. The first year we were workforce development program was in 2016, 2017. So the first class to go through and to actually follow under our new guidelines and things that are a little bit more activity focused, things that allow our interns to reflect, be mentored in a little bit more meaningful way, that happens with our first, like I said, class of 2017. So these kids would have been in the eighth grade at that point, and some of the teachers here have been involved in the program for the entire time. So I'm excited to hear what they have to say, and I'm really excited to introduce them to you today. Our students are definitely our stars in this program. The work that they do day in and day out, the way they represent Bryan High School, just, it makes me proud every single day. But right up there with them are their site supervisors who day in and day out come up with meaningful activities for them, they write letters of recommendation for them, they evaluate them quarterly, they work side by side with them and help them to develop skills that they will need for college beyond the professional world, if that's where they're entering next. But they also just form great relationships with our kids, and that's always a positive to have great positive role models in your life, and these young ladies here today all have those. So I'm going to introduce them, and then I'm going to let them take it away. So this is just the order that I have them. I have Mrs. Cordy and her intern McKendry Seamer. I have Mrs. Schroeder and Delaney Miley is with her. Looks like they also maybe have students today.
Yes, Mr. Jack Thormeyer, second grader here in Ohio County.
Awesome. Then Mrs. Nika Vladish, does she is?
She had a prior commitment, yes.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Gray is here with Julia Perk, who is actually, I think, just doing her senior year at Bryan High School and jumped right into our Workforce Development Program, and has been amazing. And then we have Mrs. Miller, who is our occupational therapist in the district and always is a popular choice for an intern. Sometimes they're looking for that entry into the medical field, and sometimes they're just there to help her get organized, but she's been awesome. And her amazing intern garment, or intern, sorry, this year is Hannah Gorsalanting. So I'm going to let them talk, and thank you so much for the opportunity to showcase these students and these staff members.
Thank you, Mrs. Cox, for inviting me, and thank you on behalf of Board of Education, Administration, and everyone else, colleagues, for this opportunity to share about the trust program and some of the things that Shaolin does in our classroom. But I can truly say, it's a lot easier talking in front of second graders than all of you guys, so. So I would like to introduce Ms. Shaolin Miley. She is a senior at Bryan High School. And I have had, over the years, multiple trust students that have come over and helped in our classroom with Mrs. Walker and myself. And it's kind of cool, especially when we happen to have one of those former second grade students, and then we get to see them, then interact with our current students when we've, we had them. So some of the benefits that Shaolin, and I'm also speaking on behalf of Mrs. Vlad, she had a prior commitment this evening, so Shaolin, she, we share her. She comes to my classroom Monday, Wednesdays, Fridays, for like the last hour in the day, and then she goes with Mrs. Vlad on Tuesdays and Thursdays in the afternoon on the opposite day. So I can truly say Shaolin has been a major, major blessing to me this year because I have been co-teaching for the last 10 years, and I decided to go self-contained this year. So she has been an exceptional, exceptional help with me because she's able to, when I am working with the students, and she's, some of the things that she does, actually she'll pull them out in the hallway, she'll check different sight words, she agrees with them, she interacts with them so well, and they are always so, so excited to see her. The smiles on their faces just simply light up. So I happened to bring one of my second grade students, Mr. Jack Thormeyer. And Jack, thanks for coming tonight. I know that you're probably a little bit nervous, but guess what? Mrs. Schroeder's nervous too. So we can be nervous together. So you want to come on up, Mike? All right, so. So, um, so, okay, so in the afternoons, we get to work with Miss Miley, and what are some of the things that you like to work with her? Or what's some of the things, does she, when she comes into the classroom, does she make you smile when she's, when you see her smile?
Something else.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But does she make you smile too? Like when you see her? Yeah, does our class get really excited? They sure do, don't they? Yes. And so what are some of the things, what's something that, that you can work with Miss Miley one-on-one with? Remember some of those?
Sight words.
Yeah. So he is, so she has a log, and we use some documentation on sight words, Dolch words, and so we were just looking today, and with Miss Miley working with him, in December, he, for second grade, he was getting 30 out of 46 sight words, and just last week, do you want to tell them how many you have out of 46?
Forty-four.
Forty-four, yay! So that's what's awesome, is that she can have that one-on-one, those beneficial things, while I'm engaging with the rest of the classroom. So she's been a true blessing, like I said, feeling self-contained this year. So thank you for allowing this program and having students come over and help because it's truly beneficial to not only myself, but also to the students as well. So thank you. You want to stick one up?
Yeah. Okay, so I'm Shaolin. As she said, I intern with Mrs. Schroeder and second grade students, and Mrs. Vlad with some special education students. So to be completely honest, when I was looking at internships at the beginning of the year, I really had no intention to intern at the elementary. I'm planning to major in nursing in college, so at first I was looking into interning with a school nurse, or even interning at the senior center or something like that. But both of these options just didn't work out. So Mrs. Arthur, you know, we're the senior of the workforce development class, told me some names of some teachers I could intern for, and so I kind of just jumped on it and was actually really excited about it, even though it doesn't have much to do with the medical field. I just truly love children, and so I can say I'm so glad that I ended up where I did because it's been such a blessing to know the students and teachers as well. In Mrs. Vlad's classroom, I offer help to students with their work or projects, and I've gotten more comfortable with them. I'm able to run some stations, so basically I'm just in charge of the station and help the students complete their tests, so I guess I'm like a mini teacher in that way. In Mrs. Schroeder's classroom, like she mentioned, I pull out a lot of students and work one-on-one with them, sight words, reading, spelling words, things of that nature. So tonight, Jack is here, obviously. He's such a ball of energy, but in all seriousness, it's been really neat watching him grow and learn over the course of the year, and I'm really glad that I could be even the smallest bit of help with that. So to wrap it up, while I'm helping these students learn and grow, they've also helped me a lot and given me so much support. Throughout the year, they've offered their best wishes as I compete in many sporting events and just extracurriculars outside of the classroom too. And they showed such genuine happiness when I or my team had success in something, or just if I've accomplished something in my life. So they overflow my heart with joy, and I can't help but smile when they show me such generosity and support. They show me every day that there's something to smile or laugh about and be thankful for, and I'm truly blessed by the students, Mrs. Schroeder, and Mrs. Vlad. And though I might not ever become a teacher in the future, there's been definitely a lot of lessons that I've learned that I'll take with me throughout any career path I take. And with that, I look forward to finishing learning during the year with probably a couple students. So thank you.
I have two questions.
Yes, Mr. Schroeder.
And, um, I have a special relationship with Jack as well. Jack, I have one question for you. When you're, in 10 years, when you're a senior, do you think this is something you'd like to do? And Shaolin, when you do graduate, where are you planning to enter university?
I'm going to go to Lawrence University, but I'm going to play basketball and try my stuff.
Thanks for that information.
Hello, I'm Chelsea Cordy. I am a kindergarten teacher here at the elementary. This is my first year teaching kindergarten. And Ms. McKendry, what we call her in class, is also here with me. McKendry Seamer has been my intern for two years now. Last year, when I was teaching third grade, she came to help in my classroom, and then this year, my first year in kindergarten, she is also helping for almost an hour and a half at the end of the day, it's two periods that it ends up being. And so I, like Mrs. Schroeder has said, am so incredibly blessed by having Ms. McKendry come in our classroom. Our students are blessed by having her come into the classroom. I think I have to tell them every day, please don't chat with Ms. McKendry, like you have to let her go because even when I'm teaching a lesson, they will get up and they will run to her as she comes into the room. And I have given up on stopping it because it just brings joy to my heart, and they, it just shows how much they love to see her. And so I just let it go and know that I will get them redirected in the lesson, and they're just hoping to see who can work with Ms. McKendry next. One thing that she gets to do in our classroom is we will have her pull students out to the hallway as well. She will be able to go over, we have been working on our letters and our letter sounds. We will go over, we're starting addition and counting, and so she's able to pull any students out that maybe need a little bit of extra support, that she can review the lesson that I have already taught. And so she is able to get one-on-one time, and then she will go out to recess with us sometimes. I'm not going to lie, I don't use her for my personal use as well, and she has been very skilled at helping with the capier and helping me make some extra activities like for the next week's lesson or something. So she is very helpful in that way for me, so that I'm not putting in as much time after school, she's able to help get that ready for myself. And she is able, they love reading the sight words. Oh, we got some new cubes that they, Mrs. Cordy is officially like not good enough to participate in. It's like a little brain break that will roll the dice, and there's 15 seconds, 30 seconds, 50 seconds, and then you get to bear crawl, or you get to do some activity for that amount of time. And Mrs. Cordy did it today, and they're like, can we wait up and Ms. McKendry's here? She's more fun! So we, they, Mrs. Cordy doesn't quite make the cut all the time for some of the fun activities. They love to have Ms. McKendry there. So I am blessed to have her in my classroom. They love to know how she's doing with her volleyball games, they like to keep up how she's doing with her basketball games. The one morning, she wasn't there to hear it, but we had cheered her on and made some good luck cards for her, and then they came in the next day and they asked if she had won her game. And I wish she could have been there, I wish I would have known that they, they all cheered and they like gave her a round of applause when they came in the morning, and I told them that they had won. So it's, our classroom is very blessed by Ms. McKendry.
All right, I'm Ms. McKendry, obviously. I, my junior year, I didn't really know where I wanted to intern. I was just kind of like, I love kids, I deal with kids like inside of school, inside of my church, like all around the community. And so like I texted Mrs. Cordy, and I was like, hey, like you want to intern? And I think like going into that, I, like before interning, I had no intentions of being a teacher. I didn't really like care about education, I didn't want to do that. I was interested in nursing, or like something along those lines. And so I think like it had like being in a classroom with kids and like just the atmosphere of a school has like really told, like showed myself that that's what I think I want to do in my future. And I just love like knowing that now. And I, in the classroom, like Mrs. Cordy said, I take kids one-on-one, and I get to help them with their ball words or their sight words, or just like if they need to pre-focus, they can just like be silly with me, and then we can just do one-on-one time. I like getting to like know each child, each kid in my, excuse me, in my class I have a different relationship with, and I think that means a lot to me, and getting to know like the different kids and like how they are differently. And so, yeah, I'm just like thankful that Mrs. Arthur, Mrs. Cordy have given me the opportunity to be in a classroom at the elementary and just know like all of these other kids.
So thank you for that.
I also want to give a special shout-out to Mr. Rary because he's been amazing this year as coming in to intern and dressing up as Zero the Hero for us, as Cat in the Hat, and as Johnny Appleseed. So he plays many roles over here, but I think he has done a fantastic job, and the kids absolutely love having him come in. So I need to give him a shout-out, a high-five for that. So thank you.
Mrs. Cordy?
Yes.
Mrs. Cordy?
Yes!
So I found out today that Kat doesn't have real hands, though.
I know.
It was a real giveaway.
He tried calling Kat in the house and like, just look past that, I know.
And Dad, cats don't wear masks.
Yeah, they were asking where your whiskers were, and they were like, they're tucked underneath on my mask.
I was literally getting petted as I was walking through the classroom.
It was super funny. I got him a quiet outfit today to pull off Cat in the Hat, it was really soft.
Yeah.
Oh, so he tried, yeah, they weren't really fooled by that one. Oh.
I mean, he gave her a lot of good things about it today.
Oh, good, I'm glad.
Thank you for your.
Yes.
Hi. Sorry. I'm Kim Miller. I am the Bryan City Schools Occupational Therapist. This is my senior intern Hannah Gorsalanting. I've been involved with the internship program way back when it was a trust program with Devon. And so I've had students every year, probably for at least 10 years or so, sometimes they come a couple times a week, sometimes they come every day. Hannah comes this year every morning. The first semester she came around lunchtime, but now she comes for two periods. She arrives about eight and stays with me until 9:25. I really want to discuss how we are so fortunate in Bryan. We have so many holiday students. Every year, I think there is no way I'm going to get a better senior intern than I had last year, and every year they just keep proving to be amazing to me. Like she just jumps right in, she does what I need her to help me with. So she helps me with photo packing, like Chelsea said, but also prepping projects. I do a lot of fine motorcraft with the kids, and she helps to prep those for me. She also works directly with the students. While I'm in the room too, she jumps in if I'm like jotting down my note, or if my desk phone hands, or it rings, or if someone stops by and has a question, she jumps right in. And as her skills have grown and her comfort level this year, she's jumped in even more, and it's just truly assisted me with sessions. So it's always been a blessing and just continues to grow. So I really want to recognize our quality students that we have here at the Bryan City Schools. So this is Hannah.
So like Mrs. Miller said, I'm Hannah Gorsalanting, and I intern with her every day. And before going into this internship, I didn't really know exactly what I wanted to do. I was thinking child psychology, but I didn't have much experience with kids, so I was pretty nervous in the beginning. But then as the days were going on, I was getting more comfortable and more confident in myself and getting to know the kids, and I've definitely really enjoyed my internship. And I'm so thankful that I've had the opportunity to do it because now I'm thinking about going into occupational therapy after college. And so in the classroom, some things I do is I help the kids with their cutting, coloring, or writing skills, and it has definitely benefited me so much. And I'm so thankful to Mrs. Arthur and to Mrs. Miller for everyone who has made this happen for me. And I definitely will take a lot of lessons that I've learned from this year into college and maybe my future career. So I'm definitely thankful for everything, and I'm definitely glad I've been able to get to know so many students, and I've built connections with them, and it's been one of the best blessings in my life. So thank you to everyone who has helped me.
Hello, my name is Jen Grant, and I'm the K2 art teacher here at Bryan. This is my third year having a student in my room, and I love the fact that I still keep in touch with every student that I've had. Peyton Cromwell was my first student three years ago, and she's an art ed major right now at EGSU. So at least once a month, she's texting me asking, what about this project? Can I get feedback on this? What did you, how did you do this lesson? So I hope that that will stay true for Ms. Leah because she's just so great to have around. I absolutely love having her, and it helps me be able to step up my lessons a little bit. If you can imagine caging or doing clay with a room full of five and six-year-olds. I used to organize parent volunteers to come in to do things with clay and extra help with COVID, that's not an option. So it's extra nice to have Ms. Leah in the room for extra pair of hands. She comes every day and for about one hour, 45 minutes, and every day I have a new group of students. So she almost gets to see every first grader throughout the week, and they absolutely love her, just like everyone else had said. She's one minute late, they're, where's Ms. Leah? Where's Ms. Leah? Is Ms. Leah coming? So they're watching the clock for when Ms. Leah arrives, and just like Mrs. Cordy said too, I, someone's hand gets up and I go over and, what do you need? Can Ms. Leah help me? I just, Ms. Leah, help me. So they just love having her around, and I've had other interns say that the kids recognize them out in the public, and they run up to them and say hi. So Ms. Leah has brought in some of her own artwork from when she was a student to show the kids. She, we've even recreated one of her students, her favorite projects from when she was a student this year. Ms. Leah has come up with some cool ideas and things that we've tried out in the art room, so that's been really fun for both of us, I think. And just love having her around. It's always fun to bounce ideas off and stuff, and have someone help load and unload the kiln and do different things. So I just, if you see me crying at the end of the year, it's probably Ms. Leah's last day, so.
Okay, hi, my name is Julia Perk, or Ms. Leah, as all the first graders call me. I have been called every week. I don't know how I got that. It's the minors. Okay, so for my internship, I normally get there about 1:00, and I stay until about 1:45. And as Mrs. Grant said, I help, like whatever the art lesson is for that day, I help get supplies out, or I go around and help other students who are struggling or falling behind or have questions. There's different days, some days we work with like oil pastels or paint or clay, and there's always one kid who gets paint all over himself, and you're like, how did you do that? But they're just, they're all amazing to work with, and it's so cool just getting to experience and be a little bit a part of every single one of their lives. It's been really interesting in this internship because I went to North City, and this is my first year at Bryan. So it's, this is all new to me, like walking into elementary school, I was like, where am I? Like where, where do I go? Especially the Bryan High School, which seems simple but is complicated. But this has been really cool because here at Bryan, I get to experience so many different classes and opportunities that we have in our old school. So it's really cool getting to work with all the first graders and really getting to hands-on help them with everything that they do. Some other things I do in the class, I help load and unload the kiln. I've helped Mrs. Cook sometimes, but she's out because she had a baby. And one of my favorite moments in the class was when Mrs. Grant was gone because she had to take care of one of her kittens, and I got there a little bit early because anytime you have stuff, everything runs behind a little bit. And I got there, and the first grade class is waiting outside, and the lights are off in the classroom, and I'm like, okay, we'll leave this, right? And I wait there a couple more minutes, and they're still all set. So I'm like, okay, well, you can bring the first grade class in, and I'll get everything set up. And so I ran the entire class by myself. I mean, they had the teacher in there, but I must probably got all... And one of my favorite parts is every time I leave, which it's not my favorite, but like the kids, every time I'm like, "Bye guys," they all in like unison say, "Bye, Ms. Leah." And it's like the cutest thing because they're all like, "They're all so excited and sad that I have to go." And how is it? There are always happy ones when I leave, I go to walk out the door and they'll just come running to give me hugs goodbye. And it's the cutest thing. And I'm like, "I love you so much." I'm like, "I love you too." I'm like, it's, it's just really great and this has really helped me with my career choice to go into elementary education, art education. It's just something that's always been a passion of mine. I've been working with kids. I go to church every Sunday and I help a little kids group and I've been on multiple missions trips and I help with kids in different countries too. It's always just been a passion of mine. So it's been really great, but a little more than Mrs. Grant. It's been a great first and last year at Bryan and I just, I really love it.
I will close with this and then we start with Kelly. We're going to move into pictures here, but Mrs. Arthur has been the driving force of this program. We went to her, it's been five years ago now, where we sat down and we decided that we really want to make a strong, put a strong focus on college career readiness and really hinge on that career piece. And Veronica went challenge with, we already, we've had the trust program, we had internships happening, but she completely dove 1,000% into this and has made this what it is today. It's just a phenomenal program. You can hear the experiences the students have. These are just a small glimpse of what's actually out there. I know in some years you have upwards of 60 students, right? That are developing internships across the community and these are just some right there in our school system today. So Veronica deserves a wonderful round of applause for all of her efforts.
Ms. Rary, can you share like some of those other sites out in the media, our mission schools, just briefly or?
Yeah, I'll probably lean on Veronica for that because I know we've had a full variety over the years, but you want to touch on this to those?
Yeah, I would love to. Thank you. I started, I, every year at our ABC Bankway, we recognize our senior intern, or actually I want to say senior interns, but now juniors are allowed to be in the program, which is how we've had McKendry for two solid years. But I went back and I looked at all of the years that we've had the program and just couldn't stop writing down the different places in the community. We've had, I'm not going to read them off because it's a lot, but we've had people on the medical side now. We've had family dental who's worked with us, Peter's Family Eye Care, the physical therapy office at Bryan Medical Group. We've had people at financial institutions. We've had people at the United Way. One of my favorite success stories was one that was very student-driven and I'm going to put the spotlight on Mrs. Cox, this recent graduate for just a moment. Last year Ethan Cox, her 2020 graduate, wanted to do an internship in engineering and I just didn't have anything available. I thought I was all tapped out and he took the fun himself to go to the Williams County Engineers Office and they hired him and that was a paid internship. Some of our students do have paid internships and Ethan sort of opened the door for some other engineering students that came after him. We have a student in that position now. We've always had a student at the Chamber of Commerce, the Senior Center, Bryan Animal Hospital. Literally I could go on and on. Mr. Savage has had an intern. Some of you who might have heard some of the Bryan basketball games over Christmas break, Caleb Zuber interned at W B N O his senior year and he helped with Mr. Savage, but he came back and did several games for, for B and D O, I believe. We've had several students who have gone on to actually become employed by their internship. Some of you might know Chris Bangler. He interned at Bryan Ford and now he works full-time at Bryan Ford. We had a student who was interested in IT and was hired by the Ohio Art Company. That was also paid internship his senior year and he is still working part-time for them. So we've had some of those success stories and we've had students who have said in their interview process for college or getting into certain programs that the internship was sort of something that set those students apart. So I'm so thankful for students who continue to kind of come to the program looking for some direction and like this has been so nice for me tonight to see the other side. I see the paperwork side and I, I do hear some of these stories because I sit down and love the interns a few times a year just to get them again in front of an adult and to help them articulate their experiences. But this has been really like to spend my heart good tonight to see just how like teaching it is, not just for our kids, but also how helpful it is for our teachers. We always have a lot of kids in the school system and more this year than ever before because of the COVID restrictions, but we've had a lot that are out there in the community too. So I'm proud of all of them and I appreciate the opportunity that Mr. Rary and Mr. Oswald gave me a few years ago to do this program. It's been good.
Yeah, I'll second all those kudos as well. It's one of the best programs we have in Bryan and my daughter went through it as well. And as Mrs. Schrader alluded to, we had second graders who she taught who then came back to become interns in her class and my daughter, Chris, was one of them. It's just a great program. It did a lot of great benefits for the kids. Thank you, Mrs. Schrader. So we're going to take a quick break here. Chris, just so you know, we're going to take a quick break and take pictures with everybody and then we will go back and continue with our communication from our athletic curriculum at the Bryan Secondary.
Thank you. That's a tough act to follow with kids we have in our community in that program, but we'll be brief here. We're wrapping up the winter sports season with a summary. N W L champions in girls' basketball and bowling. Both McKendry and Challen there both earned all league recognition. I guess the best thing about that is that it's voted on by the league coaches from the other schools. Girls' bowling, we did have the bowler of the year in Kate Hardy. Our swim team had 10 suit athletes represent us at the state meet in Canton. Junior Kellin Riggs was named first team All-State in two events, the 200 free and the 500 free. The 200 free relay was also earned second team All-State. That's Calibera Vitro era, Alain Makian, Kellin Riggs, and Jackson Miller. Boys' bowling team was second in the league. Our girls' basketball was district runner-up, first time since I believe 1992, 93. We also were able to host N W L championships in boys' and girls' bowling and wrestling, which is a neat experience for us, being able to showcase our school, our facilities, our community and just all that. It rotates every eight years in hosting those events. And we had both of those this year on the same day, but it weren't done really well. The only thing we still have going right now for winter sports is Dylan McCandless, who's the alternate to state in the state meet will be wrestle this weekend in Columbus. He does have a chance to wrestle if one of the four above him either are not able to participate for whatever reason. Our down week, our dead week for summer 2021 is Sunday, July 4th through Sunday, July 11th. That is where we have no organized practices, open gyms, lifting, or team-related activities. That's an opportunity for our families. They know they can plan, that they're not going to have any, any conflicts with athletics and they can do some family events. We'll come to events for spring because we're up and running with all our spring activities. Baseball and softball will start scrapping just next week, believe it or not, hopefully. And games will start the weekend of March 26th. The boys' tennis and track are also started and we'll have events that will begin in late March. We'll have one more National Signing Day event either late April or early May. At this time, we have three seniors that are, that are going to plan to participate in a collegiate sport as they pursue their undergrads degree. Ruben Deprach in baseball at Owens Community College, Caleb Kepler in football at Ashton University, and then Shaila Miley, who is here tonight with us in basketball at Lawrence College. That's all I have for now. I appreciate it. If you have any questions?
Well, thank you. Thanks, Chad.
Good evening. Said last week, we gave a state man an A C T test to our juniors. It went really well. They're going to get the kids in, get them tested. We had every junior test except for seven and they will make that up tomorrow, actually. So hoping they get one more opportunity to be able to test tomorrow, they get one more opportunity to test if, or hopeful that all seven can make it tomorrow. As we come back from spring break, think testing ramps way up in two weeks and we're back in the thick of state testing. The state did, it was kind of a limbo and it tests for so many schools not being in person there. We have full-fledged testing, they just come out with that, the government has said that, to test. They did note they will not count for teacher evaluation this year. That will change from the last couple of years. So state scores will not be used in the evaluation of teachers. So that is a change. And then last, once we perform our dadship, we look at I read for math, start reading progress throughout the year. And we're going to have an opportunity on Friday to sit down with our teachers, our students that tested again and just look for progress again, look for gaps, maybe where we're lacking in some areas or be sure that our board celebrates some successes that are, that have gone along. Take a look at this again.
I noticed that Governor Delaine has presented the thought that schools would look at learning loss due to COVID and determine, you know, lead it up to locals, I believe.
Yes.
To think about how we might need to extend programming or offer things. Have there been any initial discussions about possibly, or?
We're going to fall to Martha a little bit here.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going to look at some, you know, fortunately for us, and you can step in anytime, we've been in person. When you look at some of the mandates and videos for the learning loss of people that were online.
Right.
So I feel very fortunate there for us that we don't have those gaps. I think we don't have some because of last spring and that just is what it was. But I think we're ahead of the ballgame compared to a lot of schools that have been in person. So we'll still look at like for third grade, read guarantee to make up testing, some alternate tests. There's also some tutoring before that, some step ahead, preparing recovery, things like that.
Okay. Good. Thank you.
Yeah, just maybe I got that, but actually it's funny you ask because that's what I was doing before coming over to the board meeting tonight, was working on a 12-page document that is outlining.
Right, because that's expected to be submitted.
Yeah, yep. And we have to have that submitted by April 1st, so once I get the shell completed of that and it does, just like Chad said, it outlines basically, we've been blessed to be able to be doing these things in person, but now it allows us to put that focus on those specific areas to see if we can get those students to jump to that next level within the world across the school year. So it's been a lot easier to complete in person and then we'll finish out the school year with those support systems in place and then carry that through the summer and into next year, so.
It'll be interesting to see, you know, we always look at state testing when we get the results back much later than we want. So looking at state averages, it'd be interesting to me to look at state averages from actually two years ago till this year, just to see where that falls. That'd just be intriguing to me.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schrader. Scott?
I wanted to just share again, I was so impressed with the way those young ladies spoke and the way they carried themselves and that's just a true testament to our teachers here at the high school and the elementary school. Very impressed. So at the elementary school, we sent home report cards last Friday and we, they went home with an envelope, so parents can sign that envelope, that they took that report card out and they can send that envelope back, back to school in their child's book bag. Our PTO book fair is going on this week. All classes are signed up. The book fair is not open after school hours. It's only open for our students. It was open online for parents the two weeks prior to this week. Like Chad said, state testing is just around the corner. It goes, starts for us the week of April 6th through the 9th, that is third through fifth grade ELA. And then math is April 19th through the 22nd and then fifth grade science is April 26th and 27th. We also have this Thursday, March 11th, we have our incoming kindergarten parent meeting in elementary cafeteria. This is for any incoming kindergarten parent. Cub students do not have to come, but preschool parents do have to attend that for their, their kids moving on to kindergarten.
Good evening. We're looking forward to into the third quarter is coming up on this Thursday. So at this point, we're three quarters of the way through the school year. It's been a fun, quick ride and so the first three quarters have been like that. We're just looking forward to put the fourth quarter hold for us. This coming Friday, we'll be sending out another edition, our March-April edition of the Golden Bear News, the GBN. So that'll be going out to parents and folks on Friday with a variety of different highlights that some of which you've heard today and just a general information. I'd like to put a kudos out there to our 612 guidance staff. My goodness, they've been working really hard at things this year. As you've heard earlier, we have approximately 570 students that are going to be at Four County this year of that number. We can safely tell you that over 70 of those are going to be Bryan students, so we have a really good representation at Four County next year. But on top of getting our students into the Four County programs and so forth, they've been doing a great job getting students scheduled and making sure that 1,000 students are on the path towards graduation. It's something we start in sixth grade and carry forward. It's a never-ending process and they really do a marvelous job with that. I don't know if you saw the Bryan Times, but the Bryan Times had a number of art students that were recognized on the front page for various awards and art programs in the area, whether it be the K-12 ceramics, whether it be the QB, the scholastics, or the Black Swamp. I will tell you though about two, the National K-12 Ceramic Exhibition, that is, that is a national competition. That is not local, that is a national competition. And so to have somebody, I don't know if it was mentioned in the articles, I didn't see it, but I will state it, that you have somebody like Alexis Cosin, who have four, had three pieces selected for the national show. And that's, that is very impressive in that regards. We had four students and actually had 10 pieces entered into the competition. So that really shows the strength of our program. We also had Kenna Lane who received, that's a scholastic art show award, which again is a national competition. And a reason a couple of years ago, somebody was in and they're very familiar with it and hanging in Matt Net's room is a variety of the silvers and the golds. And somebody goes, "Is that what I think it is?" And the answer is, "Yes, it is." And I go, "You won that many?" And I said, "Yes, we have." It's very impressive. So our art department, they do a marvelous job and really get our students out there. And if you ever get a chance to see the piece that Abby Fritto did, it's a very large piece. It's all finger painted. I'll just tell you that right now. It's very large, it shows hands and it's a wonderful piece. Kudos to our junior high academic league who are the Williams County champs. Also another Four County reference here, we have Tyler James who was selected as Four County Student of the Month. And then finally, we are running hard and running fast towards our musical. We've heard lots of good things. I've seen some pictures of the sets. You won't believe it when you see it. It's just absolutely amazing. And so you've got Mr. Lulo, you've got Mrs. Zuber and Mr. Gordon and then a whole ton of supporting adults and students who help make this whole thing possible. Our musical is Little Women, just in case you didn't know, and it opens on Friday, April 9th. And there are five different performances, sorry, four different performances. There's seven o'clock on Friday night, there's a two o'clock and a seven o'clock on Saturday, and then a two o'clock on Sunday. Tickets are $10 each. They have not long on sale yet, but we will be getting that information out probably right after we come back from break in regards to ticket sales. Thanks.
Okay, so moving on to communications, we will go to Shaefer, the secretary of the department. Thank you, Vivid. In your practice are the monthly tech reconciliations and financial summaries for your review. Our total balance end of the month was $14,65,167.98. Moving on, I have amended permanent appropriations for you that are through the packet, total change in appropriations this month, sorry, if I had this pulled up, is a.
Tickets are ten dollars each, they have not gone on sale yet, but we will be getting that information out probably right after we come back from break in regards to ticket sales. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, so moving on to communications, we will go to Shaefer, the president of the board.
Thank you, Ben. In your packets are the monthly tech reconciliations and financial summaries for your review. Our total balance end of the month was fourteen million, sixty-five thousand, one hundred and sixty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents. Moving on, I have amended permanent appropriations for you that are through the packet, total change in appropriations this month, sorry, if I had this pulled up, is a increase of sixteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-three dollars and forty-eight cents. Then most importantly for today, we have an update to our five-year forecast. As you know, we are required to publish updates, five-year forecast every November and May. However, as this past November's forecast was showed in fiscal twenty-three deficit balance, we were then required by the state to reevaluate that and either show how we had corrected that situation or provide a written plan to correct that situation. And so in that process, this past month, we reviewed that forecast, and I'm pleased to inform you that we've had some changes that has rectified that situation. So if you, very unfortunate, we don't have our view today, but if you look at the forecast that has been provided to you, I'll highlight some changes. In the revenue section, we've actually seen our revenue projection for the year increase by about two hundred and ninety thousand dollars. That is driven primarily by an almost four hundred thousand dollar increase in other revenue. Three hundred thousand dollars was a dividend that was paid out by the Ohio Bureau of Workers' Compensation owing to the significant returns that they've received on that fund. And then additionally, as we all know, Fountain City Christian School closed down over the summer, we expected to not receive any rent from them during the year. However, because they have still had items in the building as they're in the process of selling their assets, they have continued to pay rent. We have received rent for every month through March so far, and I'm not exactly sure when that's going to stop, but that has amounted to, at this point, an additional ninety thousand dollars of revenue that the district was not expecting to receive over the summer. And so that, on the back of that revenue, we've seen our revenues go up by about three hundred thousand dollars this year. Then when we did the forecast in November, there was some money we knew was coming that we had not reallocated, which is the Student Wellness and Success Funds, and with this board's permission, we took those funds and placed them towards the activities that we were already doing that qualified. And so our nursing program, our guidance counselors, and the other activities that we already do that meet up with requirements of that fund, we transferred those costs then from the general fund to the Student Wellness and Success Fund, and we had two years' worth of financing to use doing that. So we moved roughly a million dollars in total from the general fund to the Student and Wellness Fund this year. Right now, current projections on the budget that the general assembly is in the process of doing expects us to receive somewhere in the neighborhood of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars next year to the Student Wellness and Success Fund. So we will see somewhere between a quarter of a million to three hundred thousand dollars of those salaries come back next year to the general fund, but a significant portion will stay with that Student Wellness and Success Fund going forward. Additionally, we received our allocation for what's called ESRS Two, the elementary and secondary school emergency relief fund. We received an allocation of one point one million dollars for that. We are going to use that to help pay the teacher salaries at the high school for operations this year, and so that has moved an additional one point one million dollars out of the general fund to the ESR Two Fund. So in total, our personnel services expense line has come down one point eight million dollars from the November forecast, and our retirement and insurance benefit line has come down half a million dollars. In addition, we are expecting about a thou, sorry, a hundred thousand increased cost in purchased services from some of the other things that we've had to do to respond to the COVID crisis. So in total, comparing our November forecast to our March forecast, we have reduced expenditures in the general fund by two point three million dollars, primarily by offsetting it with additional funds that we've received to help us operate in this time period. So between that increase in revenue and the decrease in cost, the net change to our bottom line is not quite, but almost two point six million dollars. So we are now anticipating our operating deficit for fiscal twenty-one to be approximately four hundred and thirteen thousand dollars, and that will leave us with cash balance at the end of the year in the general fund of right around ten and a half million dollars. We do see, when you look at the next fiscal year, a significant increase in the deficit, which represents that one-time money going away. So the one point one million that we are using to offset teacher salaries, that's going to come back to the general fund. That quarter of a million to three hundred thousand dollars of using up extra Student Wellness and Success Fund, that's going to come back to the general fund, and so that's why we see a spike in that next year. We are still waiting, and we will do another forecast in May if required. Hopefully, at that point, we'll have a better idea of what the Viennium budget is, what the state foundation payment is going to be. So those numbers in the next two years are going to change between now and May as we get a better handle on what the state's going to do, as we get a little bit better handle on where the economy is, and how our income taxes are going to do, and we get, just get a better idea of that revenue piece going forward. But that's why we see that large increase from, in deficit, from fiscal twenty-one, fiscal twenty-two, and then into fiscal twenty-three. So the good news is if you look at fiscal twenty-three, we come down to line fifteen point oh one. That is the line that the account that the state was concerned with in the November forecast. November forecast, that was the deficit. We are now today estimating that we will have four point seven million dollars in general fund balance at the end of fiscal twenty-three, assuming that the current emergency levy renews when it is next going to ballot. If it does not renew, we are expecting at the end of that fiscal year to have about three point eight. And so that is my current five-year forecast for the history. Any questions?
I know any legislative update, so this might have school funding there.
So we're still very early in the process. One of the, one of the more encouraging items is that the Speaker of the House has indicated that the House version of the budget will include fair funding, fair school funding program in it. So we're very encouraged by that. Of course, that passed the House back in the, in the December session and then was not acted upon by the Senate, but we're very encouraged to see that the House is making another run at that. We, we very much like that approach, it is very beneficial for our district, and we also just think it is a, is a very common sense way to fund schools. So we're, we're very excited by that. We do expect to see a slight increase in Student Wellness and Success funding if that doesn't happen. If the, if the fair school funding happens, we expect to see Student Wellness and Success go away as it's combined into that fair school funding. So it's kind of an either or. But as it stands now, they're guaranteeing no reduction in Student Wellness and Success funding going forward, and we're actually expecting to see a slight increase. It can vary because where we are compared to the other districts in the state on a primary level, and we're right on a break point. So we can see quite some, quite fluctuation depending on where exactly we are from year to year on that. But then putting the floor in that, it makes it easier for us to make long-term plans with those funds, knowing that they're not going to go away. So those are the main things that have happened at this point. Continue to watch and, and see what, what happens, and we'll have updates as we go on.
Thank you.
Okay. Then the next item I have for you is the Northwest Ohio Education Service Center contract. We do this contract every year, this is for services primarily special education in nature that the ESC performs for us. We are still in the process of finalizing what those services will be, but what they do is they set up an estimate at the beginning of the year, in the middle of the year, we revise that estimate, and then at the end of the year, we reconcile to the actual cost of services provided. So that amount is there for you. Next, we have the resolution accepting the amounts and rates determined by the Budget Commission and authorizing the necessary tax levies and certifying them to the county auditor. This is, you recall, we did an amended one of these a few months ago, this is the regular annual adoption of this, which just permits the county auditor to collect the taxes as necessary for the district. And then finally, we want to recognize a donation, fifty dollars to the athletic departments from an anonymous BCS staff member in memory of Tom Siparns. So those are my recommendations.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Are there any questions, comments? It's discussed already. All right, hearing that, I'll accept a motion to approve the recommendations of the treasurer.
Hi, Ben, did we accept those recommendations?
Thank you, Ben. Sorry. Thank Justin.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Dustin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Old business?
No, old business.
Okay, so we will move right on to new business, and one of the things we want to hear from Mark is the vaccination.
Yeah, so it's slightly, sort of old business, but still coming up this Friday. We have our second dose that will be administered to all Williams County school employees, and that is coming up on Friday, March twelfth. So we are again at the post site, so that will take place right here in our middle school, high school gymnasium. It'll be basically a reference setup of what happened on February twelfth, and we are now at that twenty, or will be at that twenty-eight day span between dose one and dose two of the COVID vaccine, that is the Moderna brand that all of the Williams County school employees will be receiving. So again, the first round was a, just a epitome of community collaboration, to host a great event for people and to give us all that next step and strive forward to get past and through this pandemic. So we're expecting much of the same this coming Friday. I just have to again say a huge thank you to the partnership that we have with the Williams County Health Department, Jim Watkins and the staff do a tremendous job, and it's also a collaborative effort and a partnership that we have with the seven total Williams County schools, the fall of events like this, it's just been tremendous, helpful process. So we're looking very much forward to it.
And is there any update on the health orders or something?
Yeah, so Governor Delain, last Tuesday, did release some new update, updates with new health orders from the Ohio Department of Health. We are, as a school system, seeking our way through the impacts and how they alleviate some of our current structures that were operating company, to then plan and develop some of our larger events, events that are coming down the pipe this spring. So for example, the three hundred gathering rule limits, the three hundred person gathering limit, rule limit has been lifted for banquets and specific events. We're going to be working with our associations and the health departments to determine how does that look for events such as prom, graduation, award ceremonies, concerts, et cetera, as we prepare for the spring months. So we're not prepared to release details at this point, but what we do know is that from where we've been, where we are, we're continuing to move in the right direction. Hopefully, we'll continue to expand those opportunities for larger gatherings. So we're very much pleased for the direction that we're moving. It does also have an impact on athletic events. I know we have just wrapped up our winter sports and seasons, however, they did increase the seating capacities, indoor events at twenty-five percent, and to outdoor events to thirty percent. So I know Mr. Savage and Teresa Boozwell are sorting through the impacts, the positive impacts, I should say, on that in regards to our spring sports season, which has started practices, and they'll have games coming up here in a few short weeks. So very, very good news, and continue to monitor that along with the CDC guidelines that are coming out, and I know everyone, it's the time of year where we're planning for the big events, so hoping to get word out to all stakeholders in the very near future, we just want to sort through this in appropriate ways that we can give everyone the best opportunity to get these events.
Good, yeah, that's all good news. All right, so now we just go over, we'll be working, Mark, and then some redundant recommendations.
Yeah, so the first one we have here is we have another student that has met all the graduation requirements for mindset schools and the state of Ohio, so he will be an early graduate, and that is Christopher Short. Congratulations to Christopher on his accomplishments. Very well deserved for him. Next up, we do have an NW OAL resolution for reviewing, that's in the exhibit. And we, as a school system, are reaffirming our dedication to the Northwest Ohio Athletic League, Ohio's oldest. We very much want to remain a part of the traditional league that has given our student athletes and coaches so many opportunities over the years. You may have heard that there is, I will say, possibility or speculation that some districts within the league may be seeking alternative options. There is nothing that has transpired at this point, so what we are doing is simply reaffirming that we are dedicated to remaining in the NW OAL, and should anything ever happen in the future with any school in the league, we will work collaboratively with the league to take the best steps and move forward. So again, this is simply a reaffirmation of our commitment to the league.
Mark, you want to comment too, that other schools have also?
Great point, yes.
Taking a look at this resolution?
Yes.
They also passed?
Yep, other schools, every school in the league does have the opportunity to pass this resolution. This resolution is provided to all league schools in the NW OAL, so every school is bringing this, every school that chooses, I should say, is bringing this forth to the Board of Education to seek approval. At this point, we are aware of Archold and Liberty Center and Patrick Harry Schools, based on the timing of their board meetings. We are also aware that Wasiyan is having their board meeting tonight and is seeking their approval at the same time that we are.
If there were to be changes, how soon could those be realized?
So there is a constitution that the league follows, and within the constitution, it outlines the timeframes for changes to take place. So depending upon if there were any movement, usually you're looking at a two-year process for any changes to take effect, again, based on the timing of any potential movement that could take shape.
So for these other schools, maybe you assign a resolution as well, otherwise they could be there?
Well, so every, every school has the opportunity to pass the resolution, and as we are going through our board meeting cycles over the course of the months of February, March, and April, we will be able to evaluate which schools have passed the resolution and/or learn of their potential to pass the resolution, as I know sometimes it takes time to educate communities and boards on topics such as this, so that's something that we're just simply monitoring at this point.
In terms of the effect of it, it's not really a binding resolution in terms of employee, you know, in terms of, we're just trying to get a feel for those who are, who are committed to the NW OAL.
It wouldn't take a positive action by a member school to leave the district, or the conference. They, they wouldn't leave the conference simply by not passing this resolution, but any district passes this resolution, clearly isn't going to pass the resolution to leave the tournament.
Okay, next up is an MOU with our OLC classified staff. So we have lived out a, we passed coming into the school year, three years' worth of school calendars, and with that, also came all of the workday calendars for all of our employees. What we have learned very quickly into year one of very similar calendars for the next three years is that specific classifications within our OLC union do not need as many workdays that were originally scheduled or intended for these calendars. So what we have done is we have modified and amended our workday calendars for a bit of the remainder for this school year, but then looking forward for the next two school years. They were originally, specifically the classifications of food service, bus drivers, care professionals, supposed to have seven total workdays that had no students present. We have learned that with the trainings that we offer and the time that we offer them to seek some of the, well, trainings and the professional development series that we administer to them, that seven days is not needed. They were also in agreement with that, that having that completed in three or four days throughout the school year is sufficient enough. So we have removed some workdays for our bus drivers and food service members, and we've added some, what are called TADAS workdays for our care professionals, in which if there is a training that's necessary, or if they deem with us an appropriate day of work that is needed, they can come into work on those days, but it is not a requirement going into the school year. So it's something that administration will work with, with those classifications to sort through. So those are the amendments on the OLC MOU. All right, and lastly, we have our college credit plus MOU. This is one of a series of M O U's that will be coming through our way. Each year, the four county school districts form a consortium, and they work with area colleges and universities to establish a partnership to offer college credit plus courses to our high school students for college credit while in high school. And so far, we have had four of those M O U's come through. And so, in the exhibits, you will see the ability for us to partner with the Fines College, Northwest State Community College, Old County Community College, and the University of Toledo. We are expecting Lord to come through as well. Actually, as we speak today, Lord has pushed theirs through, which timing does not allow us to get it on the board of directors first night. We also expect William Green State University. These are all, each year, the four county areas selects one school district superintendent to work collaboratively with all these entities to develop these M O U's. It's an annual action. More often than not, there's minimal changes now that we're many years into this process with college credit plus. But it's just not an opportunity for us to review what that partnership looks like and provide the right opportunities for our students to receive those college credits. So, again, there will be more coming in future board meetings this spring.
And how many students do we have? I mean, just a rough number that participate in-
Rough number, I would say, in our junior and senior classes, you could sum it up probably in the ballpark of anywhere from, I'd say safely between forty and seventy students, depending on how many enroll in specific classes. You'll have a few classes in which they develop very high numbers of students. So, for example, our English class, or it's called writing composition with Northwest State Community College. We sometimes will fill two full sections, which would equate to about fifty students at those upper grade levels. If it is a regular mandatory class at the next level, at the college level, so they're looking to earn those credits while still in high school.
And those are credits that those students are earning while being able to stay in our building? Or do they travel to some of these-
So, for the first time this year, we actually have our staff certify to teach those courses, which is by the huge benefit, where we also offer them online. And many times, Northwest State will offer the course online, and all students will take it in our facility and remain right in our building. So, they'll be able to get a little extra assistance. Even though it is course taught by Northwest State, they still have the assistance to get them through during regular school.
Any other questions on this portion of the superintendent's recommendations? All right. And I would accept a motion to approve the superintendent's recommendations for the graduation requirements for Christopher Short, N W O A L resolution, the O P C M O U, and the College Credit Plus M O U.
Still have.
Thank you, Deb.
Sorry.
Thank you, Mike. Deb?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Continue with personnel recommendations.
So, personnel recommendations. So, we have a new hire in C L O's office. We have Brandy Roanheaver, who started today with us. She is our new payroll specialist, and she has a start date effective today. I know Kevin was very happy to help transition and begin the leadership program with her as she calls her new role. She comes to us with a wealth of experience in this very similar position. So, we're excited to have her on board and all the qualities that she'll bring for that position. Next, we have some transfers. You will note, as we've just highlighted in the five-year forecast, we continue to do our part to look to be as fiscally responsible as possible whenever the present, whenever the opportunity presents itself to us. So, we have had a retirement that was brought forth to us this school year. It was Julie Stricker. We wish her the best, but we have started the process of filling this position. So, in doing so, we look to see where we can make some cost-saving moves through attrition in our district. So, this was the opportunity for us to do that. So, taking the place of Julie Stricker's career position was Abby Hughes. And then you'll see that Lauren Lockwood has transferred to Abby Hughes' position. And Kelly Theo has now transferred to Lauren Lockwood's position. And you will note at our next board meeting in April that we will have another transfer into Kelly Theo's career position, in which we will then see our final area where we will see that savings due to attrition. So, those are the transfers noted there. We also have the approval of van driving hours to have Linda Spees be a substitute to be as paid as work, help with some transportation, in which we provide services, or the school and club has provided services to our students, and we have to transfer that on a weekly basis. We have a few more retirements beginning to come through. So, we have Cindy Sinclair. She will retire with us effective August first, and she is in aid right here at the elementary. And we have Theresa Wheeler, our middle school secretary, who will be retiring from Ricey Schools effective June fifteenth. So, both of them, we wish them the best in future endeavors, and they will both be very greatly blessed. We have a resignation. Emily Nagy was on parenting leave last and has fulfilled her two years of parenting leave and has decided that she's going to continue to pursue to follow her motherhood. So, she will not be rejoining us as a staff member of Ricey Schools. So, we wish her all the best. And again, due to another birth of the family, Amanda Carlin. She's in a similar situation in which she just had a growing family in the recent months and has decided to pursue the family time with the children. So, we wish both of them the best, the blessings that they're getting from Ricey Schools and spend time with their family. Next, we have additions to the classified substitute list. We have Linda Hunger. And then Amanda Carlin, who just resigned her full-time position, was willing to substitute for us on a absentee basis, so we're adding her to the substitute list on the classified side. And then we have an additional member added to our certified substitute list, and that is Brock McNeil. And last but not least, my recommendations. This is an annual action, not reflective of any performance related to these individuals in their supplemental contracts, but this is an annual action for our non-certificated staff. As we have now concluded our winter seasons, we are putting them through the non-renewal process, and we look forward to opportunities to work with them in the future again once we go through the annual process of hiring later this year.
Okay. Any questions? All right. I would accept a motion to approve superintendent's personnel recommendations.
So, move.
Thanks, Mike.
Sorry.
Thank you, Deb. Justin?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Thank you. All right. And then, points of information. Mark, I'll let you go ahead and talk about the meeting dates.
So, just the dates coming up here. So, we do have a work session scheduled for the Board of Education. We're looking to host that on March twenty-fourth. And that will take place, I guess we haven't sent a location yet, have we?
I think we talked about maker space here.
Maker space, that's right. So, we have a maker space right here at the elementary. Thank you for reminding me.
And the time for that, have we discussed the time?
Three-thirty to six.
Yes. Okay. That's what I had.
Remember that correctly?
Yeah. That's what I had, but I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
That's all we convene later this month for that. And then, our next regular meeting is scheduled for April twelfth, the second Monday of April. And I'll be right back here in the comments, see if we're working well. And then, way down the road, we just met for our last Business Advisor Committee this past Wednesday, March third. And Ben and Mike were able to join Kevin and I in some really great discussions with some of our community members in the business world. And as always, lots of great questions, lots of great conversations about not only the financial status of Ricey Schools, but the program that we offer and how we're prepared in the future. So, we look forward to more of those discussions when we meet with them and reconvene again on Wednesday, May nineteenth.
Great. Yeah. But that's what we want. Okay. We don't know of a reason to go into taking a session, so. Anybody else has? I was done. All good? All right. I would accept a motion to approve.
The move.
Sorry.
Thank you, Deb.
Thank you, Mike.
Mike?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Ben?
Yes.
Deb?
Yes.
Justin?
Yes.
Thank you.